Okay, may we have roll call, please?
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor McElroy.
Here.
Counselor Metcalf.
Here.
Counselor Prokop.
Here.
Counselor Strobel.
Here.
Counselor Tenbush.
Here.
Mayor Drinkwine is absent.
All right. So, moving on, we are now at the Citizen and Community Group comments, and I have a couple in front of me. I will call up John Dolezal. And just a reminder that every speaker has three minutes.
So, I read this and timed it. It comes in about 3:07. So, I'm John Dolezal. I live here in town. And my comments are regarding the wastewater treatment plant. I was shocked, as everyone else was, at the cost increase at the 60% review. So, I went back and looked at the process. I'm sure, and I hope, that I missed a lot of information that was available, but this is what I found. In the January 24 pack, there's a document, Findings for Exemption from Competitive Bidding. And here are a few quotes from that document. Quote, "The RFP procurement approach allows the city to select a CMCG firm most capable of achieving the scope and any cost reductions and deliver a high-quality project within an agreed-upon guaranteed maximum price and schedule." Another quote, "The GMGC contractor can provide realistic determination of costs and constructability issues that will allow cost-benefit decisions to be made by the city. The contracting method will allow alternatives to be reviewed in a team environment of city staffs, design engineer, and the contractor working in a partnership." Quote, "The engineers estimate values the cost of the project at approximately $39.9." Quote, "The GMGC can provide realistic determination of costs and constructability issues will allow cost-benefit decisions to be made by the team of city staff, design engineer, and contractor working in a partnership. Contractor-led value engineering will decrease the cost of the project." Quote, "Kennedy Jenks has recently constructed public improvements using the GMGC method for other cities in Oregon. The projects have been successfully completed within budget and on schedule." Questions I had on that first part were, did these ongoing team meetings happen? Who attended? It looks like the starting cost was $39.9. Who came up with that number? What was the 30% cost? When does the guarantee of maximum price kick in? KJ talked about other projects in Oregon completed within budget. What on earth happened here? Have the projected operation-maintenance-cost estimate changed too? And finally, in May of this year, Slayden did a presentation in Part C with title, "Cost Estimating Value Analysis and Cost Tracking." Some key quotes, "Cost control is integral to our project approach, and we prioritize setting ourselves up for success from the projects." Outset, quote, "Since we continuously bid treatment plants, construction projects, our cost database is up to date, and we can confidently estimate completed costs." There's some others, but I'll skip to the questions I have. When did Slayden actually look at the estimates? Did the last workshop, during the last workshop, it looked like they looked at them sometime after the 30% milestone? Is that possible? Did the other contractors have higher bids because they saw the errors or discrepancies? And in closing, I ask, who's responsible at KJ? Who's responsible at Slayden? Who's responsible in Estacada? We had some specific requests for the original design, and they've had to be value-engineered out.
Thanks. So, in answer to those questions, I think I saw Melanie taking some notes, and we can shoot you an email to answer those specific questions, if that is acceptable.
No, we want to answer you. We'll give you a call, and if I could, if I put those in a document, like a Q&amp;A, we can even put it on the website or something. Perfect. Thank you, John.
Appreciate it. All right, next up, we have Terri Brown.
I just slide it to the left or the right.
Dawn?
Yes, yes.
My name is Terri Brown. I live at 29400 Southeast Eagle Creek Road, and probably soon to be absorbed by Coyote Ridge Subdivision. So, I don't know if many of you are aware, the contractor, that was an old tree plantation, 50, 60 feet tall timber, and he logged it all. His plan was to burn in place the logging slash, and it would have taken all winter long to do that. There was hundreds of tons of slash created. I don't know if you saw the, on Deuce Road where IPG put in that solar panel farm, the slash pile there. That was mini compared to the one that they did in Coyote Ridge. Anyway, I'd like to thank the staff and some of the council members, Melanie and Sean, and I contacted the Oregon Department of Forestry, and they got right on it. And they changed his mind, and so he's chipping all of that, and we'll haul it off. And I'd like to say that most of the people in Estacada won't know the good thing that you did because they won't have the smoke to complain about. But I spent four years on the city council a long time ago, in the planning commission, and I was here when we ousted John Rowley as the mayor. And so, I was mayor pro temp for a while. And not many times did people come and say, "Thank you for what you do." I'd just like to say, "Thank you." And I based my assessment on this logging slash. There are 40 years of wildland firefighter and burning logging slash for the Forest Service. So, 40 years, I know what kind of impact that would be. So, again, thank you, Melanie and Sean, and everybody else that participated and tried to change the contractor. And he's a good contractor. Don't get me wrong. I'm not complaining about him. It's just a poor decision on how to take care of that slash. So, I'm done. Two minutes.
Thank you, Terri. We appreciate it.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you. All right, so next up, we have Mr. John Reiser. And Mr. Reiser, we did receive the printout information. There are two topics that you want to discuss on, but according to council rules, we need to just keep it to the three minutes. If there is an opportunity at the end of the meeting, if you want to continue on and speak further, then you could come back at the end of the meeting. What's that? I wish that's how it worked. But you do have three minutes, sir, and you can start when you're ready.
Okay, I think last week, okay, I'm John Reiser. I live at the airport. I've talked here before about the airport. I'm passionate about the airport. My first, I gave you guys this printout, really telling you what I was going to read, but I'm not going to read it. But my new favorite word is bulwark. And you guys are the bulwark for the protection of the Valley View Airport. With the agreement with the county, if he ever tries to rezone it, it comes back to you guys. So, he's changed it from private to public, and we don't know what that's going to do, but it is going to make an economic difference in the airport. People just won't be able to fly in. It's going to be invitation-only. So, I don't know where that's going. But, you know, you last year did a 50-acre minimum and zoned it airport and put a protection zone around it, but we got a hold of that. If he comes back in a year and says, "Hey, I'm not making any money," it's because he hasn't tried to make any money. He's run the people off that wanted to have a business there. He's asking us to pay all the maintenance. He's not putting even a phone number on the hangars to rent the hangars. He's got six empty hangars. So, you guys, you know, if he ever comes back, you know, stick to your guns. And it's a 50-acre minimum, and it's an airport. If he can't run it, let him sell it. Either turn it into a 50-acre lot or make it an airport. So, the other thing I want to talk about is Deuce Road with Doug and the Skates. I talked to this last month ago. They did make a change, and they're going to supposedly add five feet. They look like they're adding some now, but they're only not adding very much. I did check on concrete trucks. Concrete trucks are 10 feet wide. And so, the westbound lane is going to be 10 feet wide. We're putting 2,000 homes in there, and it's going to be 10 feet wide. The county says they're going to come back. If they ever do the other side of the road, they really owe you, owe us, the city, another 10 feet. The telephone poles are in the lane. The county, I don't trust the county. I asked them why the, in front of Faraday Estates was only five feet, where the county specs say that it should be six. And their excuse was, "Well, that's a different planner." So, try to make them move those poles over and give us the 18 feet that we're supposed to have. A 12-foot lane and a 6-foot bike lane, both sides. So, anyway, I think that's it. You guys are doing a good job. Save the airport.
Thank you, sir. All right, are there any more comments online? Anything else? Great. Okay, now we're moving on to the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions, comments, before we approve? Anything you want to pull out?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, the first?
A second.
First and a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And now, we're on to department and committee reports. And I'll start with Jerry.
So, the Oktoberfest was a huge success. I don't know if any of you got a chance to come down, but the library, the mobile library vehicle, says that they had 500 visitors just to the library van, which not everybody that was there was, you know, went to the library van. So, when my wife and daughter were down there, they estimated it to about, you know, about 700 people midday. And then, when we got down there, when I got down there at 5:30, there was still probably 150 people there. So, I don't, we haven't got the true estimates or true numbers from downtown Estacada Commission, but it was talking to the food vendors. They planned ahead, and thank Lynn, is it Lynn Peterson for the Timber Town? Huh? Yeah, she kind of wrangled all the food vendors and got them more, you know, planted seeds to get them more prepared to bring more food, so there weren't food vendors that ran out of food by, you know, towards the end of the night. But talking to the Urban German, he said he probably did half again as much business this year as he did the previous year. So, that's amazing. And all of the booths and stuff were, you know, they were still there at 5:30 when I got there, where last year, they were, most of them were packed up and moving on. So, it was a great event. Look forward to, you know, it getting bigger every year and becoming a draw to Estacada and a staple to the city of Estacada. So, that's all I got.
Good. Great. John, then?
Our committee meets tomorrow, but there's some updates for you guys. Lawrence Road and Copeland has been addressed. Big shout-out to Paul Runyon with Clackamas County for fixing the road and widening it a little bit, going beyond. He kind of gave us what he could give us currently from doing that, but that should help vehicles from sliding into that culvert and buses to be able to make a little bit better turn on that road. So, that situation has been taken care of, which is a huge win. And then, secondly, I would just like to ask that for staff, that if the committee chair comes to you and asks to remove an item, that it not work its way back onto the agenda going forward.
All right, nothing?
My notes are on my computer. My computer's still loading. But the economic, it froze for a while there. The Economic Development Committee met and moved closer to working on the strategic plan, moving forward, set some assignments to different members, and they're going to be working on putting that information together. Then, John Legarza has been great to work with, and it's going to help us compile it into a plan.
Good. Sounds good. Okay, I have something from Parks and Rec. All right, so regarding the Founder's Day event, Phillip Foster Farms have offered up their spot for a celebration. But I know the Arts Commission, and I know that they had spoken with you too, Jerry. Everybody's kind of wanting to keep it local, keep it right here in Estacada. But I do want to extend appreciation to Phillip Foster Farms for wanting to go out of their way to help us with that. So, with that said, a subcommittee has been formed to get this going and see where they can go with this event. The sprint into spring is moving forward, so they still need to get metals, bibs, and registration up and running. And they should be getting their USATF certification soon, so this will be a certified course. So, for all you runners out there who need a certified course, something for Boston Marathon, this will be one that people can actually run and get certified. And on the running note, the trick-or-trot will be Saturday, October 26, from 2:00 to 4:00, and they were just kind of tying up some loose ends with that. And lastly, they are planning a movie event, the Parks, Parks and Rec, and this will be, they're looking at the date of December 14th, and there's going to be more on that to come. So, that is all I have. All right, Melanie?
Hey, a little slideshow here to keep me on track. Just a couple of updates. I have three slides this time, so it'll be quick. Unless, Peter, that's why we can link them that. All right, just a quick update on Hillway. The culverts have been installed. That's a picture I took today from the Campanella side, looking back towards the project. The excavation has increased, meaning we're going to have to do more excavation than we thought because there are more roots and, like, woody debris that's down. We thought it was undisturbed dirt from the testing that was done, but there's more woody debris in there, which makes it unstable for the roads. We'll have to excavate more of that out than we thought. But the contractor and engineer are working on the best way to do that so we can utilize a lot of the soil that is there that is good, but we will have to haul in some extra rocks, so we'll keep you posted on that. And the weather has been favorable. They're making good progress. We just looked at the first invoice that came through today, and it notes that they're about 23% complete. So, this could have been like the fast 23%, and then the rest, you know, will drag out a little longer. But they're making good headway right now, so, next slide. We have some tree removal projects going on that people may have noticed or may be noticing. We removed trees at the Portal Park to prepare for breaking ground on the wastewater plant early next year. And we were planning to take out some hazard trees. You can see those on the right beside the public workshop. And, but it turns out, they were not suitable to send to the mill because they're so, they have disease and rot. So, those would have driven the cost of the rest of the project up, so they're sitting there. They'll be coming down in the next couple of months, though. I think Dawn said that would, I think he said December. So, those are still going to have to come down because they are a hazard. They're right behind the shop. But the first part of it over at Portal went great. It's always sad to see trees come down, I will say. But it's nice to see, as Counsel Prokop pointed out to me earlier today, that there are still trees along the river and trees along Timber Park. And so, well, it's just a different look for it at this point. But we do have other trees that are on city property located behind Ace Hardware that we'll be removing. There's, a lot of those are on private property, and those are going to be removed. But we'll need to take our, I think it's 10 or 11 trees that the city will need to take out because they're damaged and weak, and they have ivy growing up them that's damaged them to a point where they need to come out. So, people will probably really notice that. I'm not sure. It's kind of tucked back in a corner, but those are coming out. And then, that last dead tree on Main Street Hill will be removed. So, if there's any questions about that, I'm happy to answer. But right now, we're just kind of cleaning up risks to property and access and things. Next slide. Lastly, I wanted to ask for some council direction, if the council's willing. We've run into some issues with implementing the downtown design review and code, which is in Title 16, and that's not something that staff can initiate. We need to have direction from council or the planning commission to update Title 16. One example is painting existing buildings. We, I think when we changed that last, the council was very concerned about transparency, making sure the community knows what's going on with our downtown commercial buildings and such. However, we went probably too far and needed to maybe bring it back. So, we'd like to make some changes that we could propose to you. For instance, if you're going to paint a building in the downtown zone, then we have to put a notice in the newspaper, even though we already have an approved paint palette. So, that's one example. And then, the other example is if people are doing internal renovations that reduce window transparency, we can require windows all day long when they're building a building. But then, what they do on the inside, which they need to sometimes, you know, it's a health facility or something, and they might want to put those things on the windows or there's signs, signage they want to promote their business. And then, it kind of defeats the purpose. So, we're inconsistent in enforcing that. And those are just a couple of examples that we'd like to review the code and bring some ideas back to council. But is there council consensus that staff could be requested to review that code and present you with some, an update on that or a proposed update? And then, we'd go through, I'll read what Alan told me. He said, "If you would like to do this, then at the next meeting or the one in November, he would list out the specific amendment proposals. He'd make a staff report to say, 'Hey, this is what we're proposing.'" And then, if the council approves of those, then he'd draft up the amendments and send it through. Maybe get noticed and go through Planning Commission, and then come back to council. So, it's kind of a long process, but yes.
While we're on the topic specifically related to code and transparency, can you, I'd like to just squash rumors that I've been hearing the last couple of days in particular and just ask for, Lakeshore, I heard that they submitted plans. Is that true, not true?
The lake, yeah, lake, what do they call them? The riverfront apartments, the apartments that were proposed down there, there have been building permits submitted, yes.
Okay, is there any other movement on that? But, I mean, I would like, like, this was such a hot topic. We should just cards on the table this, rather than give it to people in pieces. I think we should be forward with what's going on. That way, the community is aware.
Right.
And it will help kind of.
Yeah. So, you want to speak to that?
We've been, we've been informed by the Fire Marshal that they, there are issues with those plans. They don't, related to ingress egress, as well as potentially some height issues that need to be resolved. So, those plans, as they sit today, you know, were required by Land use school too, to sync up with all of our other partner governments. And so, this is, obviously, if they can't, they can't get through the Fire Marshal's process, particularly on a health and safety issue like ingress egress, then those aren't, those aren't the sort of final plans that we would need to have. We need, we need to have, we need to have plans that, that can be signed off on by, by the Fire Marshal.
And for clarity, Peter, just really quick, so nine months would be November, right?
Yes.
Just for clarity. And so, does this, plans that don't meet the Fire Marshal, does that, what does that do? Is November still the deadline that they have to have the, accepted by the Fire Marshal plan? So, all changes need to be made in the next couple of weeks, or does this buy them more time?
Um, no, I mean, my interpretation of it, and ultimately, it's the council that interprets your code, not me. But what I would say is, if merely submitting plans that somehow pauses the clock or extends the clock, then really, what's the purpose of the clock? Because someone could, someone with CAD could draw something up and submit it, and then, you know, the Fire Marshal would say, "Well, this doesn't meet, we can't get our trucks in. We can't effectively fight this fire, if there's a fire." And then, then they get another nine months. I mean, I, that's not how I would, that's not how I would interpret it myself. And I'm not going to ask you for interpretation tonight because this wasn't an agenda item. But I think we were really very clear with their attorney and them as far as the process and what they would need to do. And so, ultimately, and we, we had a discussion today. We're going to have, I'm sure we'll have a discussion with Fire Marshal as well. You know, we, we have clear, clear and objective standards, and we need to implement them. And health, life, and safety is one of the most important things that we do. So, assuring that people are safe, whether it's in existing structures or a new structure that's proposed to be built is something that we obviously need to do.
And thank you. I was asking more, just for the record, and so the community would have a full scope of.
Yeah, totally. And, you know, we were, we were on the phone when I was driving here tonight. Melanie and I were on the phone and discussing, discussing these various issues.
So, I guess short answer is there have been building permits submitted. They're not complete at this point, from what we've been informed from Fire Marshal. And that would need to be met, and that November 9th would still be the deadline.
Did the planning department deem it a complete submittal?
No.
No. Okay.
All right, and then, so moving back to your original, you were asking the council, the proposal. I'm fine with Alan. I mean, for me personally, and we'll let the rest of the council weigh in, I'm fine with Alan coming back with, with proposals of what he, you know, what we need to look at as far as the code, and if we need to tweak anything, I'm good with looking at that. I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but.
I've seen some nods. I'm in agreement as well, too. You can make it more clear and concise.
More clear, concise, yeah.
Can you just speak a little bit more to the transparency issue? Is it coming up? Has it been a problem with, can you give me?
There's, there, there is a, if there is a healthcare facility, a new healthcare facility that is proposed to be built, yeah, I mean, there are reasons why a doctor's office, you know, they, they want light coming in, but they don't want to see people.
Like a frosted.
Yeah, they, they want, right, I mean, they want natural light, but they don't want people to be able to see into.
We have like physical therapy office.
Privacy window.
Right, we recently put up privacy windows. There's a new, a new business going to open up downtown. They recently put some signage all over their windows. Dollar General met the letter of the law, put some windows on there. But there, it's about two and a half feet deep, and they're supposed to put displays in there, which they do from time to time. There's a, I think it's a wellness and massage place, and they have curtains. So, it's kind of, it's been a struggle. We've tried to enforce the transparency, and I don't know what the answer is, but if the council's okay with us taking a look at that and maybe bringing back some proposed ideas.
If the specific concern is for health facilities, can we just put an exception in there for healthcare-related businesses? Rather than just, I just don't like the idea of getting rid of it completely because the reason you want to have that is so that when you're walking, foot traffic's coming through there, they can see into the businesses, see what's going on. There's other businesses that use fogged-out windows too, that we don't open the door to by changing the transparency code.
So, let's, if it's all right, we'd like to talk about that because there's just been, it's just kind of been, we've been inconsistently enforcing it. And so, that's all right. And then, you can tell us however you want it to be interpreted, how you want us to write it, but.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Let's do it.
All right, and that is all I have. So, is there any other questions?
No, I kind of, the thing I was contemplating, talking about, I was asked the question, so I didn't have to make the decision anymore.
That's awesome. All right, and we have Chief Mendoza here tonight, so he's going to give us a report.
Thank you. So, I have a presentation for my report this evening, and Melanie and I actually are going to work through it together. So, I did this presentation for the Traffic and Public Safety Committee several months back, and then was asked to present this here at City Council. It is similar to one that I did maybe a year and a half ago. There's, it is updated, though. So, we'll go to the next slide. And basically, we're going to cover the history of our contracts, the contract city model, the overview of CCSO city contracts, basic contract structure and benefits of the contract. And we did add in a little bit about the refine and change for the invoicing or budgeting from the sheriff's office. We'll do the next one. Thank you. So, very interesting, and my favorite part of the presentation is this right here, that the history of our contracts in 1978, City of Estacada was the first city contract with the sheriff's office for police services. Following that was Happy Valley and Wilsonville. And then, looking ahead at 2009, there was, and we were, we updated the model. Some of our people went up to King County and looked at how they did their model there. And there was some updating 2009, and then, most recently, we're actually in the very final stages of updating this current contract. So, I'd expect that to be done, probably not till after the first of the year, but we'll see. I think it's kind of sitting with the lawyers at this point. But that was a cooperative thing with all of the, all of the cities, and then, all of the chiefs and the sheriff's office combined. Uh but that was a a cooperative thing with all of the um, all of the cities and then all of the chiefs and the sheriff's office combined. We'll go to the next one. So here's where we are currently. Uh City Estacada is on the flexible service model. We'll go into more in a second. Currently four point two five um full-time employees or or employees. Uh in March, uh right around March, we're going to be adding one more, so we'll be at five point two five. Happy Valley and Wilsonville are, as you see seventeen and twenty-three FTE, so much larger, but their population is is reflected as well. We'll go to the next. So here we put side by side the. The flexible service model, which is what Estacada is currently on, and then the city model on the right. And I try to um put them side by side for comparison. So population under ten thousand and a population over ten thousand. That's not a uh an absolute, like Estacada could move into the city model before we reach ten thousand. Population, but it's not a requirement. Uh five or fewer uh FTE and that number does not include supervisors. So um at um, uh so we could be in the point where we added a full-time sergeant. Or a full-time chief and that wouldn't push you into the full-time uh city model. Um what, one thing that we do is we do estimate that on the flexible model, about ten thousand um per employee for overtime. Whereas you see on the the full-time city model, it's twenty thousand per employee. And um that's reflected in that that next statement where there's no minimum staffing for currently for Estacada. Uh the example is if a if a deputy calls in sick, we're not required to replace that deputy on overtime. Um the city will uh revert back to a county district. And the the county deputy that's that works out in this area will then cover the city. Um and the city is not charged for that deputy's services. If it were a um, for example, um Happy Valley or Wilsonville, somebody called in sick and they went below their minimum staffing, then they would. Have somebody work overtime and then that would be a essentially a mandated cost. And then um currently, I'm your part-time chief, uh where the city models have full-time chiefs. And they also have um detective options and CSO options. And CSOs are. Are community service officers that work um our front desk, take, take phone calls, they take walk-ins. Um it's kind of the, you know, that front desk face. That can help the community.
I'll just add to this. I think it's a fantastic option that the county has, has that flexibility to. They have the full city model for the larger cities and then they have this other flexible service model that's allowed us to kind of grow up into. That we can still prioritize our law enforcement. We still get great coverage from the county. We have our own deputies that are in town. Um but we, it, we also are able to manage that financially better, being a smaller community. Um and the, as far as reverting back to like the county, whoever's working in the county, there has been times. Um one time I came down middle of the night because the alarm went off. I don't think it was the middle of the night. I think it was, I don't know, eleven or twelve. Alarm went off here, I came down and who's in the parking lot, but Deputy Colbert, who um was now working in Wilsonville, but he got mandatory to work overtime. And he'd already, he'd been here um working the the previous, um his previous bump, whatever that is. The contract was, yeah, was for um in Estacada, so he was very familiar, but he was here to make sure that, you know, everything was locked down and good. And um so we do have that, we have the coverage that we need, but still at a a budget that we can manage until we get a little bigger and can kind of. Grow into um, you know, prioritizing a higher level, different type of service.
And right, um we go to the next slide, but I'll I'll say at at this moment, um you know, moving into March when we add another deputy. We're nearly at twenty-four seven coverage, um in a really good spot with this. Um number of full-time employees that we have, um always room to add more to to fill in those gaps and to backfill. But it'll be a a good spot. I um, I had just jotted down this note and I was thinking about it when I started here. And I wish I could remember when that was, but it was, you know, roughly two and a half years ago. We were at two point one five FTE, so we're, we've doubled that, uh just about doubled that and we'll actually be over that um this March. So just in the last few years. So that's great for the uh services that we're pro- providing for Estacada. So you'll see when you move to a city model, um you get the option for um a. City identified uniform, uh which is black in color. Um and they have uh city patches. And um I'm going to use the my model Deputy Bigler back here. You'll see it. Deputy Bigler is assigned to the city, but he's wearing the county deputy uniform, the green and the and the tan. So this is an option to move to a um easily identifiable um city uniform. Um so if, you know, if the deputy's knocking on your door, you're seeing him walking up the street, you'll know that that's your Estacada deputy. Um and then the patrol cars um are um branded as well with police and the identified by the city. Um that is an option, it's not mandatory. Um there, there is um, you know, there's a uniform cost and and graphics cost that. That go, doesn't really matter what color they are, there's still a cost. But I think that that's something that um I would imagine that Estacada would be interested in and the other, other cities um seem to like that option. And we'll look at the next slide. So this is uh, this slide kind of covers some services that are not billed. That are just in, I would say included in the contract. And you know, to to the contracts benefit or to the city's benefit, uh overtime for county-supported major callouts. So anytime that there's a major incident and and um there are several patrol deputies that arrive. Or detectives maybe come out, um the city, the the city does not get invoiced for their time. Um tomorrow, I'm going to talk with Traffic Public Safety about a a recent incident in town where. Um the county deputy had responded to the call or SRO came and helped, but there were, I think, a minimum of uh five different. Um county units there, including a supervisor and a K nine and um. And they dealt with a uh situation, you know, and that's, that's just part of the benefit of um having this close relationship with the sheriff's office. You know, we'll still help other cities, but but this is, I I would, I would point to this. Being that close relationship that knowing that this is the area that we're responsible for, the sheriff's office is responsible for. Um special unit activation, um SWAT, um our crisis negotiations team, craft, which is our um. Criminal reconstruction and forensic technicians, they they go to the major crashes and also crime scenes and reconstruct that. Uh we have an air unit, which is an airplane. Um we also have drones um that are part of that air unit. Anytime those teams are called out, um those are uh included in in that cost. And I, and I giving an example of um, one second, I'll give you an example of if the SWAT team gets deployed to the city of Estacada. Um the, those, those come with a big price tag, uh those deployments, because we're talking about a forty. Um officer minimum that are, majority of those people are coming in on overtime. Um and so that's a substantial uh price tag that the um, that the sheriff's office takes care of. Yes, sir.
So um, you know, on this services not built, so I remember a a couple of years ago, there was a a pretty big manhunt. That involved a few different jurisdictions coming into Estacada. Um I I I know I saw Happy Valley, I saw Sandy Police. I saw, I mean numerous, I think there was a couple Moma cars. Um were, were we building the extra? In in that situation, do we get billed extra for something like that or?
No, the only thing that on the invoicing, the only thing that comes um to the city is, is the actual time that the deputy is assigned here. Of um and that's it. Um and and we've changed our billing model, which will go into towards the end of if, which will explain. Like what you're charged for SWAT, um for example, and uh if I remember correctly, it's, I mean, it's under two hundred dollars for the year. Um which is um significant, uh you know, compared that is, is probably twenty thousand dollars to deploy the SWAT team. On on one call and the city gets charged um less than two hundred dollars for the year. Um and that, that covers their training cost. What, when, and I'll go into the kind of the budget, how that works a little bit. Let's say this. So this Sergeant Sanders wearing his um SWAT gear there. If Sergeant Sanders was assigned to the city of Estacada. Then SK would pay for his training and his deployments because he's part of the city. Um but um Deputy Bigler is on search and rescue. When he deploys on a search and rescue, because that's a state mandated function that the sheriff's office must do, that the city of Estacada doesn't pay for that. The sheriff's office pays for that. It um, it's a, that part is maybe a little bit confusing, but we're trying to find the most fair model to. To get reimbursed for actual costs, uh and that was the, one of the directives. Um from county council to the sheriff's office that we get reimbursed for actual costs.
One thing I could add on that is that the other, like say there's a SWAT call in um Oregon City. Um they, they contribute by having their, their officers, I don't know how many, if they have one or two officers. That part will participate on the county SWAT team and they'll go other places when there's a SWAT call. So that's how they kind of contribute. And we contribute, we have play, pay a small amount. If one of our deputies happens to be on SWAT, that would be something that. Uh we can contribute, otherwise it's, uh if it's not one of our four or five deputies that are out here, then it's just something that we can benefit. We benefit from, everybody works together.
Go to the next slide. Do you want to take this one?
Sure. All right. So um this is just um kind of looking, I'm not going to read the whole thing, you can read that, but. Um just going to list down the highlights of having a contract with the sheriff's office. Because we do have, um you know, if we were out in the middle of wherever. And um didn't have such strong competition from other agencies around here, it might be easier to hire and retain long-term deputies. Or and have a long-term service. Um but we're able to, because we do have, you know, all of, we're just very close to. Many other towns and um counties. The sheriff's office can really maintain their, uh and they're gaining, they're hiring more and more people back to getting back to their staffing levels that they were at. But they have a, they do have a large pool of deputies to create this small town fill. They come in, they work here for. Is it two years they commit, they?
Two to five.
Two to five years that they commit to being in the city, uh but they still, they don't have to leave the sheriff's office to advance. They can work out here for a while. And then they can move on, you know, to a different area at, with the sheriff's office and and will, and the sheriff's office would send another deputy. So we can kind of keep rolling without um having people coming and going literally all the time. So it's, that's a, a benefit. If they do have an extended absence, which we have experienced, this is a huge, a huge benefit. Um say somebody goes, they get called up to active duty and they're going to be gone on their deployment, which that has happened to us. We, we pay for that for thirty days and try to, the sheriff's office, you might have to correct me on this, they try to fill in with a different deputy. Find somebody else that can come out here, but if after thirty days, um they haven't been able to fill that, then we don't have to pay for that. Particular deputy any, anymore. Um whereas if it was our, our police department and somebody de- deployed, then. They'd be um with us for, and I'm not sure how that, how they get paid with the, their military pay and their.
The, the county offers um um a certain amount of paid days at, at, it's seventeen or something like that. Or military. But the, the benefit of this is if if we were in SK, our own standalone department of. Um use this example of five people and one was deployed and now we need to fill forty hours, that means the other four need to work an extra ten hours every week. And here you have the benefit of of the sheriff's office, which is sitting at around a hundred and sixty-five sworn deputy positions that can fill that. Fill that gap and that need. And we'll actually um, City of SK, if no one is here because of this, then. Um the county will take that FT back on our um, basically on our spreadsheet, right? And SK doesn't have to pay for that person that's not there.
What do you guys plan on getting back up to if you're at one sixty-five?
We're um, I don't have the exact number. I I thought it was one sixty-five and I heard a different number the other day, so we are. We are full throttle hiring right now. Um we've hired over a hundred in the last four years. Um and uh one thing Melanie said earlier is that we're all competing in the same pool for the same applicants. But we're doing a pretty good job with that right now. Um I don't know how many vacant FTEs we have, but we're actually getting really close to this. We're finally kind of climbing out of that, that ditch we've been in, that hole we've been in for a little while, that we're starting to see. Uh some relief on the staffing side. Um I'll, I will, um I'll get a hard number for you and get back to you on that.
So um along the lines of the small-town police field, um let your deputies know it's okay to wave back to the community members.
Yeah.
I've heard from a, I've heard from a few people that, you know, that, you know, they wave while they're driving past, you know, and, you know. We get, we get, we got the shining star over here that, you know, is out.
Yeah, we know it's not Kevin.
Yeah. But yeah, there's a, I I've heard from a few community members that they're just, you know, they're, it just feels kind of, some of the deputies feel kind of standoffish.
Okay.
You know, um.
Yeah.
Just a smile and a wave every, you know, every now and then, just to get that, you know, let people know that they're, they're happy to be here, you know?
Yep, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. The last point on there is a, is a lot of things that get handled through the sheriff's office, union contracts, HR, training, equipment. Maintenance, um the liability and policies. Um just a- all of those things that roll into the county managing that for us is a, as a small town, um is very helpful.
So the next slide talks about our um investigations division. Um and this is, this is really like where I can hammer this point home on in the next few slides of. You know, really how large the sheriff's office is, um and how many different, you know, specialized units we have. A lot of times, you know, if you look at. You know, City of Milwaukee or Milala, you know, these smaller agencies, uh which are bigger cities than Estacada, but they're still a small agency. They'll have a couple of general detectives that will handle any investigation that comes in. It's just whoever's up next. And it could be, you know, any of these different categories, they're handling all of them. Um and so you might have a detective who knows a little bit about everything, but he's not really specialized in any particular. Uh area. Uh for, we're fortunate with having a large um detective division that we have detectives that specialize. Um in all of these categories here. Um and so, um you know, we have. Our own CSI um group that's within the detective division. And you know, you, and I'm not going to read through the list there, but but, you know, a whole long list of of detectives that specialize in that. So they um, our detectives often will instruct uh at different. At the detective academy in different places and and help other agencies uh with their investigations because of the experience that they have. Um so it's easy for our deputies to um ask for help and draw upon that experience because it's all the same agency. Uh we'll go to the next slide.
And I just noticed the time, so I want you guys to have time to ask questions too, so we'll try to, I think there's only a couple of slides, just a few slides.
Yeah.
So we'll kind of, we'll move a little quicker. Sorry, I got, I got interested.
Yeah, no problem. So uh Family Justice Center, um uh this was a, this is a fairly big deal. We're one of the only agencies have this wraparound services and we work with the DA's office. Um we have detectives now that are assigned here at the Family Justice Center. And and really focused around uh domestic violence, but it also um, um there's adult sex crimes there as well. Access to Clackamas Women's Services. We'll go to the next slide. That's part of the kind of part of our detective division. This just um is talking about our joint task force. A lot of these that we are either a part of, or the first one is the major one that we lead. Um the interagency task force, that's our drug team and um they received an award here recently for uh the good work that they do. Uh but you'll see we're part of the US Marshals, FBI, um human trafficking and and really the, the large majority of the major crimes team in Clackamas County. And the next should be patrol, patrol resources, uh a lot of patrol resources, um aviation, we kind of talked about a little bit. The um, we have a um person that's on the explosive, uh the bomb unit, explosive disposal unit. Um that's with um the Portland metro area. Crisis negotiation patrol K nine. Um we have a robust patrol K nine um group and and they train a lot of the other K nines in our county. Uh Marine Unit SWAT and the traffic team. And I kind of mentioned earlier that a lot of our employees train um. Uh across the state and train people at the academy, train other agencies. But one huge benefit we have here is we have all these people in-house to train our own. But one huge benefit we have here is we have all these people in-house to train our own people. And so we can really offer a lot of training for our own personnel. We do, the sheriff's office offers, you know, above the minimum standard training in, in every category. And when you compare that with other agencies, sometimes a smaller agency struggle with providing good training for their people. And this, this should be the last slide, talk about billing.
Okay, so each, so we, we have an annual budget that we're, that we allot for police services. And then each month we are billed the actual costs that are pretty close to what it ends up being, what we, you know, what we have our contract for. There are some estimates like how much overtime we actually needed to use and things like that. But we do, it's a cost share. So it's, what the county is trying to do is not profit from a contract with these three cities, but also not supplement the, you know, with the county, people that live out in the county, they shouldn't supplement the services that we're getting in the city. So we try to do a cost share or cost recovery program. And they've recently updated how they interpret how we share those costs. So the, the list there, the county internal service costs, that includes the county cost allocations for finance, facilities, utilities, technology services, all the things that the county sheriff's office is paying for. And then we get, we pay our, based on our FTE, how much, so it's a smaller, you know, small amount. But rather than like if somebody bid a contract to us, they're going to say, okay, this is what I think it's going to be. I'm going to give myself a buffer. And I'm going to have profit. And so, and then they kind of just, you know, we just roll with that. But this is actually trying to hit the number right on the head where we're paying for the services that we're getting. The sheriff's office indirect costs, that includes the administrative, administration expenses. The analytic, strategic analysis unit, communications, professional standards, finance, business services. Information technology, fleet, facilities, kind of all get lumped in there. Investigations would be there, that includes their, a cost share of the training budget. Special units are the air support, crisis negotiation team, drones and SWAT. And that's that small amount that we were talking about earlier. Training is a cost share of the total sheriff's office, sheriff's office training budget. We pay again according to our FTE. Then uniforms, equipment and services and vehicles are pretty self-explanatory.
It's proportional to our officers. Like if you have 165 officers, we divide that by, and we have 4.25. We're responsible for 4.25 of the 165. Is it a ratio like that?
Essentially, when it comes to like for training, which is really nice because I, because then we know we have an exact dollar amount of what we can spend on each employee. Uniforms, equipment, those are actuals. So if, if a deputy need a new vest, we get an actual bill for that.
So if we go up 4.25 to 5.25, our cost share is going to go up roughly 25%.
Correct.
Okay.
So, and yeah, so when we do that, we're not just looking, you'll look at the cost jump up and you'll go, oh wow, that, a deputy is that expensive? But it also is the, that cost allocation. All right, anything else we should?
All right. Any other questions from council or anything?
I just have a comment. I've been nagging you about this for a couple of months. I appreciate you getting this most information together for the council and coming with this. This is a huge resource for us to be able to see exactly what we're getting, what services are offered. And then I'd like to say thank you. I've seen Bigler pulling people over in the school zone, slowing down speed, coming off the hill. All the things that the committees have been asking for, the council has been asking you guys to do, you've been very timely to do. So I just want to say thank you for the hard work and continue it, please.
You bet. Thank you.
Yeah, the presence has been noted for sure. Seeing folks out in the community is great.
So I, I don't know how, how you guys feel about this, but I really like the city model. And I personally would like to see us at that city model level by the time that, it, the, from the development that, that exists on Deuce, by the time all of that reaches Eagle Creek Road, I would like to see us, you know, at least approaching that city model because that's all going to be a lot more houses, a lot more people. And we're going to get, we're, that's going to put us, I mean, that's probably going to put us closer to that 7,500 to 8,000 residents. And I'd like to see us, us get to the city model, you know, right about that time. I'd like to be prepared and on board with, you know, with that by the time we get to that 7,500, 8,000 population mark.
Would it be possible to get a cost estimate for like, if you have the exact same number of officers in the city model as opposed to the flexible? But the cost to the city would be for that, the same number of officers?
Yes.
Can do that. And we do try to historically, and as we go forward, the amount of property taxes that comes in to the city and goes in our general fund. That's kind of been the amount that we try to not exceed that in our law enforcement service contract. And we've been successful at that so far. And as we do have that growth, I think, I hear, you hear people say a lot, we like to have our own police department. And I know, I think it's not necessarily, they're not thinking about all of the things we'd have to do to make that happen. But I think it's that pride of, just pride of community and seeing our name on our law enforcement. The cars and the deputies that we know they're out working on behalf of our community. And I think there is a lot of community pride in that. And I think that's, I'm guessing that's where it comes from. Anybody else can fill me in on.
Just seeing what this, with this report, you know, going through this, going through this, this report. To me, I mean, I might be way off because, you know, I'm not the most educated when it comes to what police costs are. But it seems to me to get all of, for S K to have their own, to have our own police department with all of that, all that were offered from Clackamas County, all that were offered, all, all of those different things. To me, that seems like it would be in the tens of millions. You know? I just, I, I, I'm all for moving forward, just, you know, Clackamas County.
Plus the county deputies here in the state of Oregon and as well as other law enforcement in the state of Oregon are paid a livable wage. If you go and move to Wyoming and you meet a deputy in Casper, Wyoming, they are usually living in a trailer and they're working a second job. So, you know, our, our law enforcement does get paid well for, for the job that they do. And yeah. Peter?
Yeah, I've, I've experienced this model both here in Damascus where we, we were the city, city model. But as the other cities that I represent have their police forces. And particularly in the last three years, the challenge of being able to recruit officers and retain officers has been just enormous. And the amount that is spent on HR issues or union negotiations or all those other things. I mean, there's so many costs that would just never occur to you unless you've had to experience it yourself. And this has been, I mean, there's a reason why Wilsonville hasn't gone to their own police force despite their population, which is quite high. And it's just because of the professionalism of the, of the sheriff's office. And so this is, this is a really, in my opinion, is a really good value that they offer. And, and prevents a lot of the issues that, that come from having, you know, a dedicated department. Cause like if you have five officers and one goes on, one gets called up, which happened to a city that I represent, like we had to figure that out. And then there was a hire that, that we found out was, who had been hired and, and there was an investigation then that we were informed of. And, you know, our insurer was like, you've, this has got to be paid leave. And so you're having to make up those hours and it can be tremendously expensive.
I'd also like to say that if it's possible, I'd like to see Deputy Bigger, Bigler on a retirement contract where he's here till he retires.
We're working on that.
Doing what I can to keep him here.
We love that.
I think it should be noted too, just for the community sake, like that, we didn't really get into the details, but what happened within Campanella, the, the response time with that, the guy made it, four or five blocks is all he made it from the time that he called before he had four cars on him in the community and stopped it. Before anybody's vehicles were damaged, before there was any property damage. I mean, the response time to that, one to the SRO, incredible. But two, just to the other, the other officers that came into the community and things like that. So it was impressive. Like I said, I'm, I'm more than thrilled with what we've been seeing so far and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. I know we all appear very much appreciate all the hard work that Clackamas County Sheriff's Office does for the community. All the deputies here, you yourself included. And we just appreciate all, all the work and just keep it up.
Thank you.
Love having you here.
Yep.
Okay, so moving on to council business, we have item A, the wastewater treatment plant, value engineering update and early work amendment approval.
Okay. I'll just, yeah, introduce that. We have Sean from Kennedy Jenks and Rob from Slaton here with us. And I'll let them come up to, I just had them show up and sit through our whole meeting and everything, just in case you had questions that I knew I would not be able to answer. And so wanted to have them here and they were happy to be here to, to talk with us. I think Taren has name tags for them also, not name tags, but cards. And I just, just to kind of kick this off, looking at the staff report, there's a lot of information in there. We got two topics to cover. The first one is that council directed staff to reconsider two of the items that we accepted as part of our value engineering package. And we'd like to discuss those with you. And then secondly, there's a few items that need to be pre-ordered for the plant due to a long lead time. So that's part two, the early work amendment, number one. So to delve into topic one, we, the council proposed that we return the size of the shop that was going to be at the new facility to the original design size and not downsize that. And we went back and took a look at that and Chris agreed that the new, it's 14, no, excuse me, 24 by 36 feet. And that's big enough to pull a vehicle in, do the work they need to do, have some tools in there, they need to work on equipment. So we feel that that, it fits the footprint well of the design that we've got laid out. And that it's, that would be a reasonable savings and a reasonable, it's not, we're not giving up too much. But I do appreciate that the council really is supportive of our operators who run the plant and want them to have the best, you know, whatever facilities they need. So that's our first recommendation is to keep the shop at its value engineered size. And then secondly, the odor control is a huge concern. We want to make sure that that is top quality. And so the council recommended constructing a building around the headworks, which, which is a portion of the plant. And we went back and revisited that. And if you, I'm just going to breeze over the top of this. And then if you have questions you want to delve into, they can answer those questions. But staff are, Chris and in discussions as a team, like we did, we do have team meetings weekly, when we can talk about that later, yeah. But as a team, we looked at it and we believe that having the channels covered in the headworks is a better option. It will save about a half a million dollars tapping to build the building. Because I explained all of the, there's certain, there's a bunch of stuff that has to happen in that building as far as safety and I won't even, I won't even try to, they can explain that. But, so it's a very expensive building to build. Having the, you either build a building and pipe that to the odor control, or we cover those channels. And it's a negative pressure type of a system, keeps everything in the channels, and then that gets piped to the odor control. And we feel that as a savings and it is a better process and easier to work around. So those are the two, just to deal with topic one first, those are the two changes we'd like to bring back to you and request to keep. Do you have questions about those?
Go ahead.
It's going to be exactly, is what you're saying is that whether there's a building there or not, the odor is going to be exactly the same?
Yes, that is what I'm saying. Do you want to describe that any, in any more detail?
Microphone, please. Hello?
There we go.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
So what we talked about with Chris and Elena and Melanie is, you know, with the building there, there's going to be times where Chris and his operators are going to have to have the doors open to do particular operations. So that will create some odor periodically. It'll be the same thing with the channels covered. There will be periodic times where he has to remove the covers to lift up a piece of equipment to do a piece of maintenance. So with both options, there'll be times where there will be periodic odors. But, you know, we're talking on, you know, an hour here, three hours there for maintenance. It's not all the time like you have now. We would design it so that it's this, pretty much equals the same odor either way. Chris also liked the option of leaving the lid off because it makes him, gives him increased access for getting to the equipment with the no forklift he has and stuff. If it's inside a building, he has to work around walls and beams and things also, so.
Okay.
Heidi? Well, let's just say that at one point the smell is bad for whatever reason. Can it be covered in a building?
You could add the cover, yes. You would have to add, you know, additional safety measures, additional HVAC, et cetera. And we talked about it, we would leave some additional conduit, you know, in the right spots, you don't have to dig things up later. In case you did want to do that, you know, putting in a few extra conduits now is cheap compared to digging everything up later.
We got Jerry and then Jonathan.
So my, my initial concern with the size of the shop was the, the city is growing. And that the size of that shop might be good for now. Is it going to be, you know, is it going to be good in five years, 10 years? Is it going to be the right, you know, is it going to be the right size or are we going to be adding to it? You know, so that's why, that's why I brought up the, you know, the size of the shop. Cause, you know, just looking, looking towards the future, I know I'm dealing with it at my work, we don't have enough space. You know, we don't have enough space for anything. So I don't want to, my, my whole thought with have, going back to the larger sized shop was, you know, we would have the room to expand in the future, you know, without having to go through and construct a new, another new building, you know?
Question, do you want to?
Well, we can, and Sean can maybe talk a little bit more about that, but there is plan for additional buildings in the future as the city grows. Because, you know, you can't fit everything on the existing footprint. So there's outlines on the drawings for here's where the extra basin would go with these extra facilities as the city grows.
Yes, the idea is to keep that footprint compact to try and minimize the cost, right? And so as the plant expands, it's likely that you need to move the city shops at some point in the future, beyond 20 years, right? So if that were to happen, you'd have the additional space available to increase the size of the shop.
I mean, I'm, I'm completely comfortable with what the, the, you know, with those operators and what the staff decides. You know, I'm, I'm cool with keeping it or do, going through this. I just wanted to explain why my initial, you know.
That makes sense. Forward thinking. I appreciate everybody putting their heads together and trying to think long-term with us.
Jonathan and then Paul.
Yeah, I'm going to echo what Jerry was saying. I'm, I think my mind is on building now bigger so that it can host more. So that we don't have to come back to the citizens in 10 years and say, I know that there's a plan to expand a, as we get there. But the, the longer we can push that out, the better too. I mean, and also, I mean, have we started looking at the cost of the different types of buildings and then sourced them with local people to see? I mean, is, are we shrinking this because it's a footprint thing or are we shrinking this for cost?
It was dual. It was, it was to help cut down on cost and also to, the way that it fits in the site plan, it fit a little bit better. Cause we did readjust some other of the, of the components as well, right?
Let's just move the headworks closer to the MBR basin and it shorts, shortens up the influence or the larger diameter gravity sewer. And then the pipe that connects the headworks back to the MBR. So there's some advantages there. It cuts back on a lot of site work. Because we have that property line that we share with PGE and on the west hand side, it helps pull it all back onto city properties so that we're not negotiating inisement with PGE. So there, there was a lot of reasons for doing it.
Checking in on the headworks. So the original plan was to have the headworks inside of a building, correct? And now it's more of an open concept. Do you have other plants with open headworks?
It's more common to have it exposed to the elements than it is to have it in a building. We were just trying to be sensitive to the aesthetics more than anything. If you see screens, then you know exactly what's going on there, right? But.
Does exposure to the elements provide any, any adverse action to the, to the system itself?
Most of those components are designed with stainless steel and they're made with covers to set outside because most of the installations are, are outside. And because headworks kind of sees the, the brunt of everything, like in terms of. And because headworks kind of sees the, the brunt of everything, like in terms of corrosion and it's getting the sulfide right out of the sewer from water that's been sitting in there a long time. So they kind of build those elements to take that outdoor rating, if you will, or additional corrosion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like some questions regarding, or some concerns regarding the size of the building.
Would you like us to revisit that and if we can't make it the full size that it was previously to at least consider, I don't know if we could, it was, we were reducing it by four feet in the depth and by fourteen feet. Is that right? Yeah, fourteen feet. It was going to have two garage doors or two bay roll-up doors and it went down to one instead. And then we, is that right? Was it going to, or was it just going to have a bigger door?
It's the same width and it still has two bay doors and it's just, I think we should talk about. Yeah.
Well, according to what I wrote in my staff report, unless I was wrong, I wrote that it was previously thirty-eight feet by forty feet. Is that how big it was going to be?
Correct.
Right? And now it will be twenty-four feet by thirty-six feet deep.
It's still thirty-eight. It's the same width, so you can accommodate those two bay doors.
I would, I have the width and the depth wrong. I think I turned it sideways. Okay, so it's the same depth. It's just, I mean, the same width. It's just not as deep.
Right.
But can still, it can still pull in a full vehicle into it. Okay.
Great.
So I'm just going to say the easement part makes sense to me, but if, if we're talking about cost, again, I'd like to refer to what Councilman McRae said last, last time we discussed this, like I would like to see the bids come in on different types of structures from local to see if we can beat the number that's presented. If, if we're bidding out stuff on say a national company or something like that, their margins are going to come in higher. They're going to have to source workforce and other things like that. And that's simply not the case here. I don't believe. I could be wrong. I'm not saying that matter of fact, but I just think that before we go cutting size for cost, let's get real cost estimates local and see if we can bring it down that way before we go shrinking footprints and different things like that. I mean, I'd like to give these guys the size of the building that they wanted originally, not, uh, does this work for you? Yeah, it will work, you know.
Was, was the original, was that the size of the building they originally wanted? Did they have a say in that size or, or is that something that was just kind of?
Just in the design.
It, it was more than adequate for what they needed to do with it.
Okay, all right. So, so the building wasn't, it's, it's not what they had requested originally. It's just what was proposed. I, I guess I'm fine.
And we could, we could look at it if there's any way to expand it any larger without losing the
Without having to.
Get back into the, yeah, without having to get a PGE property.
The easement, it's not just a matter of like money. It's also a matter of time in getting someone that can make a decision.
And we do, Elena just reminded me that we do have the shop that's over the screw press right now that we're not tearing down. Kind of planning to use that for Parks and Rec potentially, but we could, it is a, it is a shop if we needed additional space, but.
And the easement part I understand, but if specifically to the cost, I would like to see bids if that's.
Yeah, and we do have to remember, even though, even if we get local, uh, local contractors to bid on this, it's still a federal project. So it's, yeah, but we're, we're going to do our best to get our local, local folks to be able to bid on that.
What do you mean by that?
That it's still a federal project?
Yeah.
They still, like even, so a lot of our local contractors may not want to be part of a federal project where they have to pay bully, they have to, I guess it's bully. And then.
Just sort of have to pay prevailing wage.
Which is. And do all the paper reporting requirements and, and so that's going to unfortunately push us out of some of our local contractors, but we still want as many that are willing to turn, to give us bids on things. So we'll be looking at that process.
Yeah, so we do a normal procurement plan that I, I'm almost done with and then we'll meet with Melanie and Chris and and Sean and the team and make sure we're getting, because Chris has listed a number of local contractors he wants to make sure we're reaching out to. If you have someone specific you want to, you can get their name to Melanie. We'll make sure they're on the list. And we can talk to them. We'll make sure they have documents and try and, and see if they're interested. We do that all the time.
I would like to have a, a, some sort of get together or something and invite contractors some beforehand to try to create that list.
And I talked to Melanie about that actually before this meeting, that that's something we've done also, so.
Be nice to get like a dinner together or something and invite a lot of local and I'll, I'll do my best to get everyone to come that I can. But yeah, I think that's going to be the critical component of this project is that the more local labor, what, what's an average amount of local contractors that you use on a project like this? Is there an average?
Well, it depends on, you know, different cities define it differently. It's like I just did a.
Within a hundred miles maybe or something.
Oh, I mean, lots of cities define it as less, uh, less than a hundred miles. And so typically what you have to do is you have to take out the major equipment because it's built where it's built. You know, we don't have someone that builds headwork screens and the MBR equipment here. So you take that part out and you just look at the labor and materials and usually you get well over fifty percent depending on the specifics of the project.
When you say labor, is that an outside company that's hiring local labor or is that a local company?
The parts that Slaton would like to build, I mean, I live 25 minutes from here. We have a lot of employees that live in the area, so you know, local labor, people that live within 50 miles of here, say.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify, my stance on this comes from like, let, you know, we can remove some per diem costs and different things like that from sourcing local that will significantly decrease what are. I mean, there's a lot of electricians that live in the area. There's a lot of plumbers that live in the, I mean, we work with all of them all the time. So it's not too big a deal, I don't think there.
Since we're on that subject, I have one more quick one. The, when the requests for bids go out, what does that process look like for? How do you guys, you guys soliciting bids as well as the public notice, correct?
Correct. So we'll have our list, procurement lists that we work on with the city. You know, of all the people that we've reached out to and that Chris wants and anybody that you guys add or if we have a meeting. And then we will also publicly advertise it in the DJC and other things, just like any other bid.
How, and then, so the procurement list is what you're going to use? And then do you guys have a separate list that you're going to use for your, that you typically solicit bids from?
Yeah, so we'll have our typical list and then add anybody, you know, Chris, like I said, Chris has given us a list, anything that we come up with, with meeting with you, we'll add them to it.
I want to, I just want to be part of the process when you guys are putting those packages together requesting for bids. Cause I think what is going to disqualify a lot of the local contractors is that things are grouped together in a way where it's outside their scope of work. Like say the building you're putting in, it's got a concrete slab and you got a superstructure and you got a laboratory in it. Separating those things out so that someone could do the laboratory, someone could do the slab, someone could do the superstructure is going to probably bring a lot more local contractors in rather than, I don't, I don't know, I haven't been part of one of these public contracts before, but how is that typically bid out?
And that's how we do it too. We try to make the packages so it can maximize local participation because every city wants that.
Okay.
That's, that's completely normal and that's our expectation.
When's the deadline for the list of contractors, local contracts?
Well, like I said, I'm almost done with our initial list. We'll get with Melanie and Chris and Sean and the team, you know, we meet weekly. We'll go through it and then I'm sure Melanie will want to talk to you guys about how we meet with you or do we meet with contractors, whatever. Like I said, I was talking to her about that today.
It's after the ninety percent engineering, right?
Well, no, we're going to start the list now so that when the ninety percent documents are ready, reviewed, QA, QC'd, everybody's accepted them, then we're ready to go out to bid.
So maybe by the end of the month, can you get us a list by, like in the next couple of weeks? Is that
Yeah.
sufficient to get them on the list?
Oh, I mean, we don't need the list until, you know, we go out to bid in February.
Okay.
So we'll be working on it until then.
Okay, great.
Okay, so what I'm.
I have a clarification question. You said that the, the shop was staying at the thirty-eight foot width. So does that change our number here? Because the numbers we have are twenty-four feet wide by thirty-six feet deep. So does that mean it's thirty-eight feet wide by thirty-six feet deep or what, what are we, what are the dimensions of the shop going to be?
Do you remember off the top of your head?
I, I couldn't give you an honest.
Cause it's part of our motion and I just want to make sure that we have the right numbers in our, in our motion. So I don't want to, I don't want to move for a twenty-four by thirty-six foot shop when it's actually a different number.
We could leave those numbers out because what I'm hearing is that you'd like to look, you'd like us to look at pushing that bigger in either direction if we could, even if it's a few feet in either direction without having to get an easement or move a bunch of other things around. Rather than just, rather than just approving excuse me, the value, I guess I lost my voice. Rather than just approve that value engineered size to try to increase that.
Yes.
Thank you. Is that, that's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing.
Yes, okay. And I don't know if this is possible, but maybe, and maybe the rest of the council would feel better if we had, and I mean, I don't mean to drag Chris into every meeting or anything like that. But if we could, you know, maybe if he does want to come in and weigh in and the council could hear directly from him the size of the shop that, you know, if he's comfortable with this size or if he's like, hey, you know, maybe in 10 years we, we should go a little bigger. It would be nice to just actually hear from one of the employees that's actually going to be working on site, so.
Okay.
Not to drag him out to every meeting, but.
But just to hear, like to get some feedback where you can ask them some questions.
I think that would be nice. I think we would feel better about that.
Okay.
I agree because we, we can want the world for, for the, you know, for the staff, but if, if it's not something that they want, then you know, or feel that they need, then, yeah, but
Right.
I, like I said, I just want them to have the best we can give them upfront.
Okay.
And the capacity to grow into. If, if that stays this footprint, so be it. But I'm just saying, outside, I understood the easement, but let's.
Right.
I would like to see something.
Maximize the size of the building without having to, so that could be part of the motion. And then how about the headworks? Do you think, are you okay with us leaving the building off? Doing the channels that are negative pressured to, is that okay? All right. Do you want to make a motion for that? Anybody?
Let me, I'm going to start with the easy one.
Okay.
Um, I moved to approve the early work amendment.
But we haven't talked about, oh, you guys, we haven't talked about that yet.
Oh, no.
Sorry.
Hold on, let me go back.
So it's the first, the first line.
Oh, that's the shop and?
Yeah, page thirty-nine.
That's the shop and the.
And the proposed method. So we could, it could be a motion to.
I got it.
You got it? Okay.
I moved to maintain. Maintain, I thought changed.
Oh, yeah, just, yeah, I don't think you're moving to maintain the size of, of the value engineered. You're moving to maximize.
Yeah, I moved to maximize the size of the workshop without causing an issue for getting an easement, requiring an easement from PGE. And I use the proposed method of covering the channels rather than constructing a headworks building.
Second.
Okay. First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, now we're on.
Okay, thank you. And then secondly, we do have the early work amendment. It is, it's an attachment if you want to look at that. Um, and I wrote just briefly about that on page forty-one. There's items that have a very long lead time, the generator and the membranes and the electrical package. And those have been quoted directly from manufacturers. I do have a handout if you want to look at what, like originally we got a cost and we're like, that's not a good cost. So they went back and negotiated it, was able to bring the cost down. Um, and we, they actually redesigned some of the electrical because there was a more standard way to, to do that. So we were confident with this package. However, if this package is approved, that does mean we're moving forward with the plant. This is not a non-returnable, no re, no refunds and no exchanges. So we've tried to ask all the questions like what if, I mean, I've asked stupid questions like what if we got two smaller generators? Would that be less expensive? Things like that. And there's, we feel this is the best package and by getting it on order before the end of the year, I mean, you're probably familiar with this, Councilor McRae, that at the end of the year, a lot of, that's when they adjust prices on packet, on packages of things. So if you have questions, that's what Sean and Rob are here for. But we're, we're ready to have this approved and it would get, it'd be a contract with Slaton. It does not mean, to order these things, it does not mean that we get to that guaranteed maximum price and we're not confident in that price and we want to go out to bid, we're not locked in to staying with Slaton, not to, not to be.
You would still own the equipment.
Yeah, we would still, we'd still just have the contract with them to get that equipment. So, but do you have questions about that?
I have a comment just to start this thing. I fully understand that we need this and that this has to happen. And like, I'm on board for building it sooner than later while the, before the cost rises more. However, I think as a council especially, we have to do our due diligence on this and just for a second, really consider ramifications of six million. There is no backing out. There is no whoops, we did that wrong. Regardless, right now we're on the hook to explain a million dollars for the contract that is, period, the end. So what are our options? I mean, have, and this is, part of this was before me and I understand that. So this is me asking and commenting at the same time. Is this the only type of plant that is going to work? Is this all that we got? Is there other systems? I mean, when we're talking about forty-two million, the original bid to now, I just feel like we really owe this community the due diligence before we just hit send on six million dollars essentially and agree to it to make sure that we understand all options on the table.
Yeah, so to, to redesign the amount, the amount of time that it would take to redesign this project and the expense that it would take to redesign this project at this point is, is very significant. The other thing too is that we're, we're on a clock with DEQ and one of the, one of the things that making this decision tonight does is it demonstrates that we're working in good faith in order to meet all of our obligations. We've been in touch with DEQ. Um, we've let them know that we're doing everything we can, um, but we might need a little bit more time than we have right now. And we've, um, we informed them of the cost estimates and how they were significantly higher than had been anticipated and they were, they were kind of shocked. But we've had a very cooperative relationship with them. If, if we were to stop, if they were to perceive us to stop kind of working with them in good faith, usually what happens in that instance is they refer it to the EPA. So it's no longer DEQ issue, it's an EPA issue and we're dealing with the Justice Department, the US Justice Department. There was a jurisdiction in Oregon that that happened to, and I have heard, I have heard that the original fine was nine figures. I'm not going to say exact, the exact number that I heard because I haven't independently verified that. That was substantially negotiated down, I understand, but it's, it wasn't a small number, even, even after they were done. And they, they ended up being in the exact same position that they would have been if they had maybe not done that. So, um, those are kind of the legal risks associated with why we're doing what we're doing. And then, you know, once we, once we're to that point where we bid, if we're not confident in Slaton or we're not confident in the number, you know, we can go back. Um, and whoever does this plan is going to be using these components.
And I've also asked that question because Steve Donovan, um, sky is falling and we should do it this way. And so he said, he said, well, you should just build a sequencing batch reactor, I think is what it's called. So we talked about that. Is that a better way? Do we like head down the wrong trail? But because we're on the Clarkus River and you can probably explain it better than I can. But we would need tertiary or extra filtration or something.
Yeah, there are other types of plants and Sean could probably talk about it. There's conventional plants, there's SPR plants. But they don't have as high of treatment as the membrane plant. So then you would need additional components, additional components means more land. So.
I can, I can answer his question pretty, pretty well. In the beginning, we went through, in the beginning of this process, we went through this, you know, we went through these plant options. And this was the, Sean will remember because he was part of it back, way back then, this was the best option for us. This was the, you know, it would, it might cost us a little bit more money, but it's going to be the best process for us over the next, you know, forty, fifty years. So that's why we landed on this particular process is because, you know, taking all of that into consideration, we wanted to, we wanted to do it, do it right. And not have to revisit it in ten, fifteen, twenty years. So.
Yeah, and I understand that, but I, I want to clarify some things. One, that's not my question. That is the community's question for all of us up here. So let's make that clear. This is not me. This is the people that are going to pay for this. Okay. Secondly, I don't appreciate the candor about the sky is falling. Because Steve Donovan gave us the most accurate numbers that we've had and it was, it was a shock factor to us and we didn't like it. And then it comes back full circle and now we have those numbers again in our face. I don't think the sky is falling. But what I will say is in this, I do believe that you guys have all done your due diligence and that this is right. But Melanie, there were some considerations that you talked about that not to be an alarmist, that you said like, hey, we could work towards these grants that would cut that cost back way down. But full disclosure to the community, the community is a little too conservative to, to make that something, it would make it more difficult for us to follow that through. And I'm not saying that to scare people, but when you're using language like the EPA and they're going to come after us with these numbers, is the EPA considering that? is the EPA considering that we can't get infrastructure support? Because our community has different values than what the people handing out money may align? Because these are all considerations that need to be talked about. Because I'm tired of it just going by the wayside, and I do appreciate, Peter, I want to be clear, I do appreciate that you're trying to protect us, and, and that has never been in my question. But before we go talking about being scared of nine-figure things and stuff like that, we need to address the elephant in the room, that we need help from the state level on this, period, the end. And that until they can make infrastructure not partisan, this is a problem that's gonna hit our community right in the jaw, and that's the issue I have a problem with.
So we, we had a meeting with the Oregon Solutions Team, and what we told them is we need two hundred million dollars. And my experience with working with the state on grants, and I've, I've represented some of the most conservative governments in the state of Oregon, and I've represented some of the most liberal. I mean, I was Milwaukee, staffing Milwaukee, they're very progressive. I was down in Harney County. They are not particularly progressive, uh, far more conservative. What the state cares about are housing numbers. And one of the benefits that Estacada has over other communities is that we have demonstrated that we will build homes. And that those homes are less expensive than they are in other jurisdictions, in part because of our SDCs, and we're thoughtfully trying to do all this. I, I'm not, I'm not gonna pretend like there isn't some, there are politics behind all of this, because there are, right? But like, Crook County, which is pretty conservative, got, you know, thirty-five million dollars for their justice center. And it's because Primeville's putting up houses, and populations are moving there, and they've got data centers, and they needed it. And so, at, at some point, if, if a community is giving the state what they want, and the governor wants thirty-three thousand houses a year over the next three years, and other jurisdictions are putting up every roadblock to prevent that, either because they won't expand their urban growth boundary, or they won't upzone, or whatever, and I could give you examples of communities that are doing exactly that. It's the communities that are willing to grow, um, that I think are gonna get money, and, and I've been very explicit with the Oregon Solutions Team. You know, I, I specifically said, if Lake Us, we go into Westland and Walton, don't want to expand into Stafford, and we're having to take those housing numbers, then how are they going to come, how are they going to assist us with this two hundred million dollars that we need? Because that's the actual cost, because we need a hundred and twenty million dollars for the schools. We need ten to twelve million dollars for our water. And I hope we need substantially less than seventy-two million dollars for this project. But if they want us to continue growing and be in compliance with state and federal law, then we need their help. And I think the, the good news is they've been pretty, pretty good about helping us with grants in a lot of ways, and informing us of programs, like bring down interest rates, stuff, stuff of that nature. They're gonna give us a report, the, the Metro Area Oregon Solutions Team, of what grants they think might be available. Um, I've heard that the governor is putting, um, it's hundreds of millions of dollars to help communities that are, um, that are growing, that have a barrier to growth, to try and engineer past some of these things. I don't, you know, I think we're gonna be absolutely at the table asking for that money. You know, we gave them the handout that shows how many housing units we built every year, how many are permitted to be built. So we were like very explicit in asking for money. So I would, I would hope that they would understand that the way that Oregon's property tax system works, communities like Estacada, we don't have as many resources as other communities, and if we're expected to take this growth, then it helps pay for it. Because, and I, the other story I told them was that when I started as city attorney, I looked up to see what houses cost. You know, I do that for all my cities, just to get an idea of, of the market. And you could buy one of these cottages downtown for like sixty grand. And I said, the best evidence that I'm not very smart is that I didn't buy a bunch of those rental properties, because now those same houses are going for three hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, two hundred fifty thousand dollars. The property taxes that they pay reflect those earlier values plus three percent a year, because that's the maximum. So when people sell their house, we're not getting a true up and actually getting the value. And so for a, for a community that's traditionally been more modest means we need more money. And I, I, that's maybe not word for word, but that's, but just about exactly what I told them. And they, um, you know, when we explained the actual, actual costs of the growth in that way, one of them said something that involved an expletive, just out of shock. Because they don't, they, they weren't thinking about it that way. But that's the true cost we have, and we need to be willing to tell that story and able to tell that story out there, asking for money, because it's not fair for people on fixed incomes or modestive people to have to pay a bunch of money. And I, you know, I'll, I will do that all day long, and your staff does that all day long, and plus, the staff's kind of nice and people like them, so there are other jurisdictions which aren't very, maybe aren't, you know, are, the city managers not meeting with the governor, and, you know, walking around town with the governor and pointing out the good things, or whomever it is. So I, I think that that's understood and appreciated too. So I, we're gonna make every effort that we can to get as much money as we can from the state.
And out of curiosity, if we looked at other, like, private funding options as well, not, not from the city, but just from people that like their name on stuff and different things like that, I mean, the, the reason I'm asking this, Peter, and I appreciate that, uh, I appreciate your response there, and, and thank you for being thoughtful in it, but the reason I'm asking is because, uh, there is a line here where we sell our soul, and, and the values of our community, not necessarily my value, not necessarily Councilman, the, the council next to me, but there's a, there's a line here where we lose our identity in trying to get money to pay for stuff that the state wants, that the community does not, right? So I think that I just, I would like to see us, I'm not saying you're not, but I would like to see us look at other options also. And that's not any digging, any of the guys in this room, that's just me speaking as, thinking about all the people here that are on fixed income, the new families that are coming here, the cost of a house to get into a brand new now, for even like something as little as a three-bedroom, I mean, in these new communities, we're five and a half, five fifty, you know, I mean, this is insane.
This sign that we drove by said, starting in the fives. I mean, that's what it said on that sign, is we're driving near the library, starting in the fives, and I said, that's not five oh one. You know, that's like five fifty, five ninety-nine. And like, that's, that is so dramatically different from what housing costs here, even like six years ago. Um, so I, I think that, and, and that's another thing we talked about, is like, it, they're like, well, how about SDCs? I was like, is there a market for an eight hundred thousand dollar house in Estacada? Like, it, it, at some point, these families, because that's who's primarily moving here, and it's why there's six portable classrooms next to an elementary school. It's families that are coming here, and, you know, we need the money for the school, so it, families that may have been priced out of Happy Valley, or maybe have been priced out of another area. Yeah, so I, I think that as far as like naming rights or, or things like that, that's always something we can look at. And maybe there are families here that we want to, I mean, it's still a treatment plant, it's probably a big ass, but yeah.
I was using a specific example, I'm just.
Look at every, every option, and we were told that a lot at the last mile is political. But we need to keep telling our story that, and I know probably percentage-wise, it's our housing additions are, is a small number compared to what a larger city can do, but we are growing, we are adding housing, housing. Uh, and people are coming here, and they're like, you're bringing their families here, they're coming to raise their kids, they're coming to retire, there's a lot of different reasons they come here, and it's a great place to be, and we need to, we'll be working hard to make sure that we can do, although we don't, I can't promise, I can't say the state is for sure gonna do this, but we are going to continue to work with them, and continue to, to ask for that.
And, and I think the vision and values is part of the reason that people move here. I mean, for sure.
Yep.
Paul?
Just kind of going back to the, uh, the, the purchasing, the items here, whether or not we had this increase of, you know, up to seventy-some million, we would still at this point be asking for, that we would be purchasing this, you know, the six million dollars for the, the items, the generator and, and the other items on here, correct?
It's the whole purpose of the CMGC process was to bring them on to order these items early, they were long lead times, that was the whole driving purpose of us going CMGC.
So it, it, it seems like then we, you know, from, you know, what, what Council, Councilor Metcalf's bringing up, I, I get it, we need to be looking for, for opportunities, you know, everything we can do, I think you guys have done a great job already. Keep working, keep doing stuff for the community, but for the project at hand, I feel like we've done our, our work in making sure we've got the right project out there. Costs very unfortunate, but we need to keep, we decided last, two weeks ago, we're gonna keep this thing moving forward. As such, it seems like we need to approve this a, and get this moving forward as well too, so these items can be ordered, so that we're not facing extra costs at, uh, come twenty twenty-five.
Right.
And I won't argue that, not one bit, I agree with you actually. I just, I feel like that conversation was needed for the community. I think that they need to understand that every single person on this panel cares. And that it affects them individually as well, like, that's where that conversation more comes from. I'm not disagreeing that we need to look at moving forward and get this stuff coming so that it doesn't push our timeline way out, I, I'm in agreeance.
Okay, so now we just need a motion? Yes, I believe that is still page thirty-nine, correct?
That's the easy one, Jerry.
Yes.
I moved to approve the early work amendment, one is attached in the amount of five million seven hundred ninety-five thousand forty-nine dollars, and authorize the city manager to execute the required contracts.
But first?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good, okay.
I said aye.
Passes, all right. Okay. So anymore, there's, that's, we're good on the wastewater treatment plant?
That was everything for that.
Okay.
Thank you, Sean, thank you, Rob, for being here, really appreciate you. Missing your soccer practices and everything.
Okay, so moving on, we've got second consideration, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five, and ordinance amending title sixteen, development of the Estacada Municipal Code Park Land Solutions.
All right. Okay, and this is the second reading, second consideration, so it's basically just a motion unless any other information had come up that we were not aware of previously.
I, I don't have any further questions on it, does any, does the rest of the council have anything they want to discuss?
There was no, no further information related to.
All right. Oh, and, yeah, you're abstaining, okay. Uh, I'll go ahead, uh, move to approve, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five, and ordinance amending title sixteen, development of the Estacada Municipal Code Park Land Solutions.
Second.
First and second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion passes. All right, so moving on, item six, uh, citizen and community group comments. Uh, let's see, it looks like Shirley has stepped out, do we have anybody online? Okay. Shirley dipped out. All right, okay, then we'll just go ahead and move on to mayor and council reports and comments. Um, I will start with Councilor Tembush.
You know, I say it every, I say it every week, but, uh, I, I learned so much just sitting up here, listening to the questions that you guys ask, questions that I would have never thought to ask. Gives me the courage to ask my questions too, so I appreciate you all, and I appreciate the discussions that we have. Staff, amazing job as always, um, lot of, lot of really good information in this packet, and, uh, I, uh, I feel like I was more educated by it, and of course, thank you to everybody that showed up tonight. Either here or on Zoom, uh, appreciate you all. And, uh, also, uh, shout out appreciation to our Clackamas County Sheriff's Department, they're doing an amazing job, so thank you guys.
Oh, thank you, Jerry.
Like to thank everybody that came out tonight, and everybody that attended via Zoom, like Councilman Tembush said, uh, thank you guys for participating and being involved in what's going on, and caring enough to spend your time and listen to the issues, and to the council, I just want to say thank you for the good conversations, staff as well. I know that things can be passionate, and things can come across intense, but, uh, I love that we can have a conversation that's moving the needle forward, that is also giving our community more information, just letting them feel like part of the conversation, and maybe even asking some of the questions that are rumor mill stuff, or whatever, right? Like, I just appreciate the conversation that we have, so that we can start to get this communication patch and the trust within the community fixed. And then I'd like to just remind people that, um, you gotta vote, this is, your vote matters, and what's happening in this town, you're, you have to be active, you have to participate. It's not time to gossip about it, it's time to be here, and, and in a seat, and active, whether that's in a committee, whether it's a member of the audience, and just expressing your opinions, helping give the direction that you want. We can't build this community with your vision if you don't speak up, or if you don't participate, so please participate, it's a huge ordeal. And I just would like to see unity, I don't care if you're Democrat, Liberal, Independent, Republican, none of that matters, this is about being for the people of Estacada. So please participate.
Thank you.
Um, well, echoing what the two councillors have said, um, I've been thinking about what I appreciate most about our council as it is right now. Um, we have different backgrounds, different ideologies, but we all come together and make a consensus. It, it's been really hard at times, but, um, I think that, um, we, we make a difference. And so I just wanted to say that, um, I really appreciate that all of us kind of represent all different parts of our town, and we come together, and we make things happen. And I really appreciate that it's, it's showing a nice variety of, um, ideas. And so I just want everybody to have a good night.
Thank you, Heidi.
I want to thank staff for all the work they put into the presentation tonight, and thank the police chief for coming in and, and giving us that, it was very informative. I want to thank Carrie, um, for putting all the work into giving the public an opportunity to come and meet the candidates that are running for city council, uh, to ask them questions, it was, it was really neat. I was kind of disappointed in the turnout, I thought there'd be more community members to be involved in that and take, take advantage of that, but I appreciate all the hard work that you and anyone else that helped put, put that on, Carrie, thank you very much, and just encourage everyone to vote, I mean, November's coming up quick, and the decisions you make on who you put in these positions is gonna change what the look of the city's gonna be, so make sure that your voice is represented by your vote, and, and get out there and do it.
Thank you. All right, Paul?
Just want to thank staff also for getting us ready, very helpful here, and, and for our presenters, or the, the folks that spoke tonight. John, John, and Terry, thank you so much for, for bringing stuff up, and, um, you know, Terry, thanks for following through and letting us know how things worked out as well too, it's, it's great to hear. It's great to see your process rallying the troops, and then to see, uh, the city be able to work with contractors to get some things worked out there, for the good of the city too, thanks everyone.
All right, so in closing, I will say thank you, council, for, um, again, putting up with me sitting in the the mayor's seat tonight, um, I'm not as eloquent as Sean when it comes to these meetings, but I do like to just kind of keep trucking through. Um, so I appreciate all of you guys putting up with me, as well as, uh, those out in the audience and those watching tonight online. I think a lot of good points were made, um, Councilor Metcalf, I really do appreciate the fact that you bring up questions that the community is, is wanting answers for, I think it's really important that we have at least one, one council member at every meeting, just bring up those points, um, because it's all questions that communities are, or that people in the community are asking, or putting on Facebook, or whatever. And so, um, just to get those answers, even though I know you already know, it's good to just put it out there so that information is shared. And I just, yeah, I appreciate everybody's hard work. As my time here winds down, it's, as well as Councilor Strobel, it's, it's a little sad, and I'll probably have some little exit speech prepared at that time, but, um, I really do appreciate all of you guys up here, and, um, I think we really do, at this point in time, have a very good council. And I would encourage, um, again, encourage, like everybody else, get out there and vote. I really like to see this council remain at peace and, and able to work together for the good of the community. And with that, um, we are going to, I will, I, I don't adjourn the meeting, right? Or do I adjourn it and then the executive session bring it in?
Adjourn into a, an executive session.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting tonight. Thank you all. And we are now going to move into executive session. And I've got a little lovely little script to read here. So I'll have to ask everybody in the audience and those online to, um, vacate.
And there won't be, there won't be any discussion after this. We need, we have information to present to the council. If the council wants to discuss it, we'll put it on the next council agenda for October twenty-eighth.
Oh, yeah. I'll read this little, I'll read this little ditty and then if we can take just a five minute break and then, okay. Uh, the Estacada City Council will now meet in executive session. The executive session is held pursuant to ORS one nine two uh, dot six six zero two H, which allows the council to meet in executive session to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into the room. All right, and I think that is it.
Thank you.
Take a little whole break. So I am going to bring everyone back into city council. And the meeting is officially adjourned.
Great job, Chair.